Okay, I think we're ready to roll. I'll open the meeting. This is June 13, 2017, special board meeting of the Frankfurt Plant Board. Ask Mr. Lynn if he'll call the role of the board directors.
Senator Leibowitz.
Here.
Senator Green.
Here.
Senator Kuvon.
Here.
Senator Walble.
Here.
Senator Rosen.
Here.
We have three or four information items on the agenda this evening. We have plenty of lots and lots and lots of information. First item is, again, an information item. Presentation and open discussion of report from Energy and Environmental Economics. Do we have anybody here to speak to this item?
I guess I would just add as a further introduction, the board voted at the end of 2016 to hire an independent consultant to take a, to do an analysis of the KYMEA agreement. In the early part of 2017, we went through a procurement process. E3 was selected, produced this report, and this is, this is the output of that report.
So my name is Michelle Chait. I'm a director with Energy and Environmental Economics in San Francisco. Energy and Environmental Economics is E3 for short. I know that's a mouthful. We are an electricity sector consulting firm. We advise a wide range of clients, including utilities, regulators, government agencies, power producers, energy technology companies, and investors in the electricity sector on a really wide range of issues that impacts the energy industry. We're renowned for very rigorous, very impartial analysis, and we're respected and trusted for our impartial work. And we're often engaged on projects that involve balancing the interests of multiple stakeholders. Some examples of our projects, we're currently supporting Hawaii, California, and New York on rate design and resource planning issues under high penetrations of renewable energy. We conducted the Integrated Resource Plan, IRP, and Energy and Balance Market Studies, EIM, studies for the 50-gigawatt Cal ISO system, that's the California Independent System Operator. We produce market price projections, generation transmission asset valuation throughout all of North America into Canada and Mexico as well. We developed a tool that's known in the industry as the E3 Calculator, and it's used by utilities all across the United States to value the cost effectiveness of their energy efficiency programs. And lastly, we were the lead author of the U.S. Country Pathways to Deep Decarbonization Study that was presented in July 2015 to U.N. Secretary-General Ban Ki-moon in advance of the 2015 Paris Climate Negotiations. I wanted to introduce that just to give you a flavor for the types of work that we perform. So I've been in the energy industry about 20 years. I started in project development in the international area and did some domestic and international power project finance as well. I've been at E3 about 11 years. I have led our asset and, sorry, asset valuation and finance areas. I perform utility cost of service studies and rate design work. I currently lead our practice that supports large users of electricity to reduce their electricity bills and also potentially obtain their sustainability goals. I do a lot of work in distributed energy resources, that's rooftop PV, energy efficiency, and storage. And I do a lot of work also in PPA structuring and in contract negotiations. As Walt said, in April this year, we were engaged by the Frankfurt Plant Board to analyze the economic and contractual risks and benefits of the contracts that they have with the Kentucky Municipal Energy Authority, or the agency, as I'm calling it in this presentation, KYMEA, to provide recommendations for any clarifications or any changes that should be made to the contracts. And lastly, to identify any future analysis that could be helpful in evaluating the relationships. We were brought in to provide an independent commercial contractual and economic analysis from a utility's best practices perspective. So, you know, at a high level, this is really a question about figuring out what FPB, what kind of a utility FPB wants to be, and whether FPB has the freedom to pursue becoming that utility. The issues that I'm talking about here are whether FPB, under the contacts, contracts that it's negotiated with the agency, has the ability to procure the mix of power resources it wants to procure. So that's a question, does it want to be served by coal, natural gas, renewables? What portion of its costs should be fixed now versus maybe not fixed upfront with the freedom to procure at a different cost or a different mix of resources later on? And also the freedom to implement customer-side programs as it wishes. So that's programs like energy efficiency for customers, net energy metering programs, that's rooftop solar, demand response programs to reduce demand on its system. And these are the issues that I'm going to be talking about today. This is a question of whether FPB should be taking the same power service as all of the rest of the customers that are comprising the agency, or whether FPB can have the ability to pursue its own unique mix of resources and programs for the customers on its system. So as I said, the goals of our recommendations seek to ensure that FPB retains the ability to provide its customers with the mix of resources that best meets its customer needs, both now and in the future, that FPB can freely pursue within the contract structure customer-side programs such as energy efficiency and net energy meeting, metering, grid scale resources such as renewable resources, or perhaps local resource opportunities, and also pursue the mix of contracted resources versus market power purchases. And really, at the end of all this, we'd like to be able to ensure that for the mix of resources that FPB wishes to have serve its customers, it's able to obtain power from those resources at the lowest cost. And when I say according to the attributes in the portfolio, typically renewable resources are more expensive than coal and natural gas resources. But utilities buy them for the renewable attributes, and so there's a trade-off. If you'd like to have more renewable energy, usually it comes as a cost, at a cost, but you could still have the portfolio that contains the renewable energy be procured at the lowest cost for those attributes. So this is a description of the resources that are expected to serve FPB through the agency through 2022. There's 200 megawatts of coal from the Brek and Joppa PPAs. There's 90 megawatts of natural gas from the Paducah Peaker Plant. There's 32 megawatts of SEPA Southeastern Power Administration, it's federal hydro power. And there's also some market purchases that will occur when those are economic. Will agency service lower FPB's power costs? Yes. This is a graph that shows the trajectory of agency power costs, that's the lower red line here, versus the current Ku service. And under quite conservative assumptions for Ku service and for KYMEA service, through 2029, we put together a pretty rigorous economic model, and very definitely, agency service is going to save money versus Ku service. So that's absolutely clear. We're not clear if this is really the least-cost portfolio that could have been achieved. Would it be possible for the agency to procure energy at lower cost than this red line here? Yes, it's absolutely possible to do it. So one way to do that is to buy all of the energy from the market. And just as an example, in 2017, for this year, I ran an analysis, and I plugged into our model how much it would cost to buy energy and capacity, so power, from the market. And you'd save about $20 million if you did that, versus the about $65 million that it would cost to serve all of the agency customers. So that's a saving of like 30%. But the issue here is that you're totally exposed to market price risks if you do that. And just as an example, in terms that you all might understand, if you had $5,000 to invest, you could put that money into the stock market, and you might make a whole lot of money, and you might lose a whole lot of money. An alternative is you could put that money into a CD, and you'd know exactly what return you'd make after a year. It wouldn't be a large return, but you'd have a sure return. So this is a really, really similar situation to that. In this case, the agency has fully contracted for all of the power to serve customers through 2022, and for a large amount of the power to serve customers through 2029. So on this chart here, we're pretty certain that, you know, through this period, those costs are going to be achieved. But they're not necessarily at the lowest cost. And the question here is, how much of this portfolio should the agency lock in now versus how much should they leave for future procurement? And what is that trade-off? And the real big question here is, should the agency be making that decision on behalf of FPB, or should FPB be making that decision for itself? And this is sort of like relating it back to the money that you're going to be investing in the stock market or in CDs. Do you want somebody else making the decision for you of how you're going to be investing your money? Or do you want to be making that decision yourself? This is a really key component that's going to be permeating this presentation today. With respect to hedging, utilities definitely do not want to leave all of their procurement only to the market. It's not prudent utility practice. Customers like rate stability. They like knowing that their rates are going to be stable for 10 years. Utilities like rate stability. They don't want customers yelling at them, saying, "My rates went down, my rates went up." And if you do invest, or if you do procure a lot of energy from the market, you do have the risk that your costs are going to go up or your costs are going to go down. That's definitely going to happen. The question is, who should be the entity that's deciding how much of that risk FPB wants to take on? Should it be FPB, or should it be the agency? Is the agency obligated, under the contracts, to procure energy at least cost? We analyze the contracts extensively, and there's no language in the contracts that provides that the agency procure and schedule resources in a least-cost manner. And again, least cost is obviously related to desired portfolio. If you have a lot of renewables, it's not going to be the lowest cost, but it would be least cost for that portfolio of resources. Each PPA in the portfolio has to be dispatched economically versus the other resources in the portfolio and versus the market prices daily. And we believe that the agency should be obligated to either hire a third party or perform those services itself in a least-cost manner. So our recommendation here is to modify the contracts to compel the agency or consultants acting on its behalf to procure and schedule resources in the least-cost manner. Is there any indication that procurement performed to date has not been at least cost? Obviously, I gave you the example of market purchases. That was just a hypothetical example. But we took a look at agency load projections for 2019 and how much energy has been procured for 2019. Agency loads are predicted to be about 267 megawatts in 2019. And with adequate reserve margin, so that's a little bit of extra capacity, it's like a cushion of procurement to, safety margin for serving your load, you'd need to procure about 307 megawatts of supply, and the agency's actually procured 348 megawatts of supply. Under the PPAs, they could have reduced supply earlier this year by those 41 megawatts, and the agency chose not to do so. Retaining those extra 41 megawatts means that the agency has incurred about $45 million a year of additional costs. That's probably 5% to 10% of the total agency costs. And members would have to pay those costs annually from 2019, 2020, 2021, and into 2022 unless agency load grows or the agency is not able to resell that capacity at a price that fully mitigates that overcompensation. Is it prudent for the agency to have retained that excess capacity? So there's two philosophies around this. If you are a vertically integrated utility, usually you are building generation assets, and those assets are usually lumpy purchases. You'll buy a 200-megawatt power plant or a 500-megawatt power plant, and you have excess capacity on your system, and you'll sell that capacity to other parties. In the case of the agency, we're talking about contracts that are negotiated, and the capacity purchases in those contracts are relatively flexible. And in this situation particularly, the MISO market capacity prices are predicted to be quite low for the next few years. And so retaining excess capacity in the current market is likely to be an unprofitable transaction. An alternative way that capacity can be procured is in tranches. And just for example, if the top of this box is your load, you can procure a large portion of capacity several years in advance, and then as your loads become more certain, you can sort of fill in with smaller bricks. They're just different philosophies. I think that depending upon how you're procuring capacity and the type of utility you are, there's different ways that this can be done. But I think for an agency like KYMEA that is conducting procurement largely through PPAs, it seems like it's not prudent practice to maintain excess capacity. So how is least cost confirmed, and how does KYM know what types of resources to buy? There are no procedures in the contracts describing a procurement methodology. In the electricity industry, there's a concept or a study called an IRP, which is an Integrated Resource Plan. And that is a really common type of a study that utilities all over America conduct, and investor-owned utilities and co-ops and munis all do them. A type of study like this incorporates demand and supply goals for the individual utility that's being studied. On the demand side, it incorporates factors like load growth, the gain and loss of large customers, energy efficiency, rooftop PV, demand response, and those issues get incorporated into the load forecast of the utilities. On the supply side, the goal of the utility and what types of resources the utility wants to procure is incorporated. So these are decisions like I talked about earlier. Coal, do you want to be served by coal plants, natural gas, renewables, maybe some local generation? And once you put all of those details into the model, you can run sensitivities to try to understand what mix of resources will be the most economic mix of resources to serve your customers, and under which sensitivities might that recommended resource mix change. So the important thing here is that the member estimates of their loads and the member wishes are incorporated into the procurement decision. And the agency did not carry out an IRP before it conducted the procurement process. And we think that this is a really important step that should be carried out because it will inform on an impartial basis what the least-cost resources are that serve the member needs. And it will inform under the wide variety of potential future sensitivities, such as potential future, future coal prices and future natural gas prices, whether that mix of resources will be robust and under what situations that might change. How will the agency's annual costs be collected from members? The contracts provide that the agency will develop rates that will charge the agency's costs back to the member utilities. These rates are in concept analogous to the rates that you as customers pay to FPB now for your electricity, maybe demand charges, probably as residential customers, you're paying a customer charge and some energy charges. There isn't a methodology in the contracts for how the rates will be designed and how costs will be allocated among the members. Our areas of concern are threefold. One is that the design of the energy charge rate structure may over or undercharge members depending upon their load shape. So if the agency decided to charge a flat dollar per megawatt hour energy charge, if you used a lot of energy on peak, you paid less than the cost you were incurring. And if you used a lot of energy off-peak, then you'd pay more than the cost you were incurring. Another few really key questions are how the agency should be procuring energy for and allocating costs to members that join the agency in the future. So just as an example, we did some rate design work in British Columbia, and British Columbia has a huge amount of heritage hydro resources that are very low cost. And a key question up there is, how do you allocate those low-cost hydro resources among the customers? Do you give every customer an equal allotment of that low-cost hydro? Do you charge new customers on the system a higher rate because new energy and capacity on the BC system is expensive? How do you do that? This is a really key question that hasn't yet been answered in these contracts. A third question is a question for member utilities that might receive partial requirement service. So these are customers that may not be, their loads may not be fully served by the agency. How do you allocate costs fairly to them without penalizing customers that might be all-re requirements customers in the agency? These are really key questions that haven't yet been determined. And our suggestion here is to develop an appendix to the all-re requirements contract, that's the AR contract, describing the methodology for how member power rates will be calculated. This could be a methodology at this stage, and the actual detailed rates could be designed at a later date. But it seems like the commercial concepts for how these costs will be allocated should be discussed right now because these are really going to impact how costs flow to member utilities and ultimately to the customers of the member utilities. How can agency administrative costs be contained? So this is another issue of costs passed through to members. Our thoughts are that competitive procurement could be conducted for services that are expected to incur costs above a certain level. We thought also that member utilities could be allowed to compete to provide services if they have staff that are qualified to perform these services. And an example of this is rate design. All of the member utilities here perform rate design services because they have to to be able to collect rates from their customers. So this could be an area where you could have a member, staff from member utilities actually working with the agency or potentially with the agency consultants to help provide these services. And also, any of the commercial entities engaged should also be required to provide adequate insurances, including professional liability insurance. Getting back to this question of Franklin, Frankfurt Plant Board self-determination and whether they have, whether member utilities have the freedom to pursue the programs that they'd like to pursue, this is a clause from the contract that talks about the ability of a member utility to implement demand-side programs. These are customer-side programs, and in particular here, this is demand response programs or net metering programs. So that's putting solar PV on your roof, for example. The language in this contract, I'm just going to read you the red line. "The members shall coordinate with the agency prior to implementing any proposed demand-response or net metering program. And all such programs shall be subject to review by the all-re requirements project committee in the interest of achieving consistency of such programs and avoiding cross-subsidization among the all-re requirements members to the extent practicable." So what does this mean? It's unclear whether this means that the agency will be able to influence a member's DR program or NEM program, just coordinate with the agency. If they can, or if the intent of the language is to influence a member's NEM or DR program, we don't really know how, what aspects of the program would be influenced and how that would occur. There's no language in the contract stating that NEM or DR program coordination with the agency shall not be unreasonably constrained. So normally in contracts, you see language that says, whatever you're working on should not be unreasonably withheld. And there's also no language stating that program implementation will not be impeded. And we think that a helpful suggestion here would be to clarify the language that's in this contract, to clarify the treatment of NEM and demand-response program development and coordination. There's a few slides here on grid scale resources and how free a member is able to pursue those resources under the current language in the contract. The first question is, can other members prevent a member utility, in this case FPB, from pursuing specific projects? And yes, they can, under the current language of the contract. The language in the contract specifically enables members to participate in a project, which is like a new build generation project. And the language in the inter-local agreement says that the board shall adopt said resolution authorizing such project. But there isn't similar language regarding a power purchase agreement participation from a member or a subset of members. And a power purchase agreement is really the same thing as pursuing a generation project, it's just a different way of financing it. If the agency were to pursue a generation project, they would fund it upfront, and under a PPA, a third party finances the project, and you repay the, the third party over time via a financing mechanism called a power purchase agreement. And it really didn't make sense to us why there wouldn't be, why a member wouldn't be able to pursue a PPA in in this fashion. And, without this language, a member who wished to be served by a PPA, similar to the PPAs that the agency has already entered into, like BRECK and JAPA and Paducah, they wouldn't be able to do it. And, so, we recommended that the contracts be modified to ensure that a member can freely purchase power via a power purchase agreement as well as participating in a generation resource project. Can a member opt to not be served by a resource or a PPA? So, this question is if Frankfurt Plant Board or one of the other member utilities didn't want to be served by a future contract? Like, if the BRECK contract were to be extended in 2029 and a member utility did not want to be served by that resource, does the contract let them choose to not be served by that resource? And, for example, maybe develop their own project? The language in the contract currently does not enable a member to opt to not be served by a resource or a PPA. If the majority of members approve a resource, there isn't a mechanism right now to allow a member to not have its load served by this resource and instead select a different resource. And, this again impacts the ability of the member to freely participate in any project that their community feels is beneficial. And, this gets back to the slide I showed you at the beginning, the rhino or the zebras at the water hole. If the members really would like to exercise the right to have their members be served with the resources that their community members would like to be served by, then this modification should be made to the contracts. Who retains the renewable attributes that are associated with any renewable projects that members might pursue? In a situation where the agency contracts for those attributes, it's really unclear where they go. And, in the situation where a member-owned resource is transferred to the agency, it's also not clear. Those attributes could be either marketed by members or by the agency. And, the renewable attributes or the REX, renewable energy credits, as they're called, could be sold and used to reduce members' rates. Or, alternatively, the members could retire those renewable energy credits to comply with any member renewable energy goals. When the REX are retired, it means that no entity can use them in the future. And, it really demonstrates that the renewable attribute has been consumed by the member's customers and can't be reused. So, we thought that a helpful concept in these contracts could be clarifying treatment of renewable attributes. Are there any other concerns that we had with the contracts? So, you know, at a really high level, the agency is a pass-through entity. It has some consultants and it will have staff in the future. And, those staff and consultants are out engaging in procurement. And, additional staff and additional consultants will be hired in the future to transact in the market and schedule the resources. And, the agency doesn't have the ability to absorb risks. And, any of the cost implications associated with these commercial transactions are passed straight through to members. And, members' customers are really going to be the ones that are reaping the benefits on one side and also absorbing the risks of these commercial arrangements. And, so, it's really critical that members are engaged and given information about what's happening at the agency. It's critical that members are aware of the decisions that agency staff and consultants are making because these decisions flow directly through to the member's customers and the members. And, the issues I'm thinking about are power procurement, rate design. Again, we talked earlier about how the rate design will impact the costs that pass through to the member customers. These contract language clarifications about how procurement may or may not be conducted, how behind-the-meter energy programs may or may not be conducted, how hedging may or may not be conducted. And, also, agency policy development, which will fill in procedures for issues that are not fully defined in the contracts that we have. And, we really think that the agency and the members both should really work to find a way to be engaged in decisions and actions that are occurring at the agency because these all flow right through to the members and members' customers. So, is there any indication that communication has not occurred? I think so. I mean, the fact that I've flown out from California and sat through two days of meetings here is an indication that communication, at least historically, has probably not been as open and two-way as it probably could have been. We've heard that members have had limited access to procurement information. And, again, this is really a question of the costs of the power that the agency is procuring on behalf of all the members. And, it didn't seem right to us that the members who are benefiting from the procurement, the agency has established on their behalf, should have difficulty gaining access to this information. Until recently, there had been no agency employees. So, no single staff person that's employed by the agency has responsibility or accountability for agency decisions or for the decisions and actions of consultants that are acting on its behalf. One of the solutions to this is an employee from a member utility could be seconded to the agency to work on a temporary basis. One of the ways that could occur coming up in the future is perhaps on this rate design appendix question. These employees are familiar with member needs and desires and could communicate those well to the agency. And, also, I think this could really potentially achieve a two-way best practices exchange, bringing consulting ideas and sort of fresh ideas from the agency back to the member utilities. So, the question I've been asked several times over the past few days is should FPB stay in the agency? Is it a good, is it a good idea? And, it comes back to the rhino at the water hole question. So, yes, the costs from the agency will likely be lower than KU service through 2029. That's just one aspect of this deal. And, the key concerns that we have are really around a member's ability to really shape its programs and its procurement for the customers in its territory through the agency. And, our key concerns here are this issue about agency communication with the members, the prudency of the supply procurement that's occurred to date, the ability of members to freely determine procurement through power purchase agreements or generation resource projects or hedging arrangements. So, that's this question of are you fully in the market or are you fully contracted? And, also, to be able to freely implement customer programs such as net energy meeting, metering and other distributed resource programs, energy efficiency on its system. The question of whether an IRP should be conducted to confirm that future procurement is conducted on a least-cost basis and fully incorporating all of the wishes and desires of the members and their constituents. And, lastly, the question of cost allocation among the members through the member rates. I wanted to thank you all for giving me the opportunity to share our results here today. And, I'd like to open it up to see if you have any questions. I know this is a very dry topic. I'm not surprised. I've probably put you all to sleep, drowning on for 40 minutes.
Can you explain the hedging a little bit more? The concept, whether you're in the market or not?
Yeah. So, the example I gave earlier is this question of are you, just for you as an example, are you investing all of your money in the stock market? Or, are you putting it in a safe CD? So, that's, that's the idea. So, if you're all in the stock market, you could make a lot of money, you could lose a lot of money, you're exposed to a lot of risk. And, if you're investing in a CD, you have no risk, but you're, and you're going to get a known return, but it's a small return. So, it's, it's a really similar concept here. Except, in this case, it's that the agency has procured energy and it pays a fixed cost every year for the term of the contract in order to get power from that. And, right now, those costs are, those fixed costs are higher than what it would cost to buy energy from the market, to the tune of like $20 million more every year. But, over time, it's possible that the market prices will grow. And, they could grow so that in the future, they're $20 million higher than the fixed prices that the agency has entered into now. So, the question is how much, how much do you want to pay to fix your supply now and know how much, have complete certainty about how much you're going to pay for your power for the next 10 years? So, this is like the CD, right? You're going to get the same return. In this case, you're paying instead of getting the money versus maybe paying less in the market now and maybe paying more and, you know, way more in the market later on. This is sort of the balancing act that utilities always have to perform. And, they're typically subject to prudency reviews to make sure that they procured power prudently. And, it's just a balancing act. And, the question is, is fully contracting all of the power now and contracting actually an excess amount of power now prudent? And, if you do have excess power, have you held on to it to trade? Is that prudent? If you, if you didn't buy enough power and you have to buy more in the future, is, is that a prudent thing to do if those costs are more? And, an IRP would help illuminate that because it would establish the criteria really for all of the members. What is, what is the balance? Do you want to be fully contracted? Do you not? I don't think anybody's ever provided any input on, on that looking forward over a long period of time.
Sure, and I'm, I used to be in the printing business and procurement officials couldn't predict the cost of paper.
Yes. It is.
Attributes, could you talk a little more about that?
Attributes is a defined term in the contract. And, if I could get my binder, I could read it to you exactly. But, it's, it's, it's all of the aspects of a resource that determine the resource's value. So, that could be the renewable quality, the renewable attribute, the capacity that that resource provides, the energy that that resource provides, the profile. So, like solar generates when the sun's shining. So, that's typically on-peak, wind might blow at night, off-peak. All of those combined are the attributes of the resource. You're welcome.
All right. The second item this evening is information item, presentation from KYMEA Consultants regarding the report from, that we just heard and KYMEA and then open discussion.
Thank you and good evening, everyone. My name is Fred Hadad. I'm a principal and consultant for Anfront Consulting, one of your consulting advisors. I'm here tonight along with the remainder of the team of legal and consulting Brown Thornton of NewGen Strategies and Solutions, Tom Trogger from Spiegel and McDermott, and Charlie Musson from Rubin and Hays. So, here tonight, you have the authors of all the agreements that are under consideration. And, you have the, the entities that recommended the portfolio that you have here today. And, we're assisting the agency with the development of their structure. My background, I am not a consultant by profession. I, in a couple of months, I'll be celebrating 40 years in the energy industry. Thirty of those years was in utility management. My responsibilities were power supply, power resources, we called it. It involved all of power supply, planning, permitting, constructing when necessary, negotiating purchase power agreements for the portfolio. It was the development and the operations and the management of that portfolio. I was also the responsible official to the EPA during that tenure. In addition to that, I was responsible for all the commodity fuels businesses, the commodity fuel financial hedging businesses and the wholesale power marketing businesses. I worked for the 16th largest municipal in the country and they were, have, have been and continue to be double-A rated electric utility. So, my life and the life of this team that has been assisting the KYMEA Board of Directors, our life has been in public power. We thought, we wanted to thank you, number one, for inviting us, for sharing with us first the draft report. Thank you, Michelle. Thank you, Mr. Baldwin, for that. So, some of the comments we have here today are related to that draft report. We hope to take the opportunity to clarify a couple of things from our discussions. We've met for numbers of hours, both yesterday and today with, with E3 and we thank you for that as well. So, formal responses, we have not prepared for tonight. We've prepared just a sense for the agency and the way we've addressed a number of the issues. It'll happen to hopefully provide some clarity to some of the issues discussed tonight. We did want to offer as well, in addition to this, we are prepared, the Board of Directors of KYMEA and its representatives are prepared to spend whatever time necessary to support the Frankfurt Power Board to fully understand the nature of the agreements, the complexities of the agreements, the protocols that the Board of the Director has based all their fundamental approach to this business on. And, we, we welcome that. We can't, it's a complex issue, as you represented. There's no, no thing such as taking too much time to spend. These are very important decisions, some of the greatest economic decisions you'll be making. There's a few things, actually four things, from E3's report that we are absolutely in agreement with. And, there are these. The competitiveness of the power supply portfolio. The portfolio was designed and implemented with the goal of being more cost-effective than Kentucky Utilities in the widest variety of situations that can occur in the marketplace. It may not be the lowest-cost solution in any single strategy in how you approach the market. But, I'll go over it briefly in a few minutes, the fundamentals about, around which the portfolio was designed. And, from all the analytics that we've done, the analytics supported by your independent consulting, basically affirm that conclusion. Energy efficiency, we agree with the interpretation. There is nothing in the agreement. And, it specifically prohibits the agency from interfering with conservation, energy efficiency and demand-side management programs. It's clearly, it's in the contract. We agree with that provision. We fully understand why you would be interested in being able to tailor your program for that. The renewable energy component, there are no disincentives designed into the program, at least by intention. Any one of the members is, is fully capable and has the rights to invest in renewables. There's two fundamental requirements for doing that. No single member of the agency can impart their will on all the others. And, no single member of the agency could do something that requires a cross-subsidization by all the other members. So, if you're willing to spend the money and you understand it and it's of value to your community, we believe you have multiple ways to accomplish that within the current structure. And, any additional clarity we can bring to that or even any refinement to the agreements or their interpretations, we're happy to, to consider and bring before the Board. The fourth item are the PPAs, the purchase power agreements with BRECK, Paducah. The fourth item are the PPAs, the purchase power agreements with BRECC, PDUCA, and JAPA. We believe they are industry standard and we believe they have commercially favorable contract terms to the agency. We, when you, if you invested in a physical power plant, you would be operating that power plant within what we call its technical limitations. It takes so long to start up, so long to shut down, there's minimum periods of time to run and all. We basically have all three of these agreements, and the value of a purchase power agreement is that you can achieve an economy of scale that you might not otherwise be able to achieve self-building, let's say, or self-performing a project. The metered loads can be served by these. The best way to look at these is although there's physical assets backing these contracts, what they really are is they are a right for the agency and its members to exercise buying power, buying energy in a certain hour of the day at that rate. In the case of BRECC, it's the rate in which you do that is calculated on their Wilson coal-fired power plant. So it gives us a coal-based supply of energy from a cost standpoint. There's no requirement to take any energy under that contract whatsoever. So if the market presents an opportunity for lower cost energy through MISO or another path, in every hour, you have the ability to take that lower cost energy. But you always have the right, as that market may change, to exercise and take energy at the price in the contract. All three of those contracts are developed that way. The risk of cost increases related to emissions, coal is, it's a critical entity particularly in the Kentucky market. It obviously has environmental concerns and environmental exposure considerations if you're investing in coal for the long term. As has been identified by your independent study, the, the risks of those emission costs and potential impacts to the pricing of these have been basically mitigated. In the JAPA contract, they're fully mitigated. In the BRECC contract, if, depending on how Kentucky would approach a clean power plan, if the stay is removed, there are protections based on, on that contract as well. So we are intimately familiar with the environmental aspects of coal. Coal was a component of the portfolio that I was responsible for and all the environmental activities associated with that. This was a list, I'm not going to spend a lot of your time tonight unless you have some specific questions. This was the initial list of areas that we felt through discussion with E3. This was prior to the discussions we had the last two day, we, two days. We really sincerely felt that if we could spend some time together, we could bring some clarity to this issue, address any potential misunderstandings or misinterpretations. And there may be some things, as we found some opportunity to even add clarifications to the contract agreements, because some of the concerns are well within the intent that the agency had when they developed this agreement structure in the first place. I did want to address a few key points related to those topics without getting into each of them individually. As E3 pointed out, the agency just now has staff, a temporary CFO. But the agency has been managed since day one. They've been managed by the Board of Directors of KYMEA, which has member representatives from each of the member municipalities participating. Every decision made, our job as consultants and advisors were to lay out the breadth of options available to them to approach the markets, to approach their organization, to approach their structure. The board at the end of the day picked the structure and the approach they wanted based on the analytics, the legal advice, experience of members like OMU, which is, which is one of our members who is a generating utility already. And so all of those activities have been managed by the board. So I, I think it should be clear that, that the development of all these agreements, the structure of the agreements, and this board has had to wrestle with quite a few things. We have members that are a megawatt or two in size. We have Frankfurt that's your size. We have OMU that's even larger than that. So this board sits for hours and hours and says, well, how do I give the smallest member rights and freedom and, but not let them dictate the activities of the group, let the tail wag the dog? But also that the largest members can't bully the small ones who also, with their community programs, they want some independence. Every one of your communities, the communities that I served during my career, every one of them had a unique set of elements and opportunities and approach to the energy markets, community service, and everything else. So it's, the agency has attempted to design a program that maximizes that freedom, so long as there's not a cross subsidy by other members to achieve an individual member's aspirations. And that's the key point there. There were fundamental tenants to the development of the power supply and, and E3, we agree, there's multiple approaches to how that power supply is met and what is the lowest cost way to achieve those power supply goals. We had a handful of fundamental goals for this power supply. And the first was to be competitive with KU under the widest range of situations that could occur while KYMEA was assisting with serving your load. Reliability of supply was another fundamental tenant, although there's many financial projects, products out there for energy supply that we've, and that you may use at some point in life, but it doesn't do you a lot of good if the energy doesn't show up and you're written a check to cover you for your damages. We always look at, and the board has looked at, you're all load-serving entities. That's very different than being an independent power producer or a wholesale power marketer, because with load to serve, you're obligated either to lean on your own resources or you're forced into going to the market to buy replacement power in its absence. Now, yes, the financial products will, will cover some damages, but I don't know how you feel about it, but in my utility, we just couldn't accept interrupting load for failure to, to provide the necessary services. The power supply planning and the goal to achieve least cost, it is clear that that's one place where, I don't want to call it a difference of opinions, I just think more time and more dialogue would, would bring clarity to it. But we clearly, and it is in the agreements, our procurements are done under the Kentucky Model Procurement Code. The purchase power agreements that have put it, put in place and the purchase power agreements that are currently under evaluation, I'll give you an example. The, the primary source, what we called the base load source that we did in 2015, we went out with an RFP, we did it consistent with the statute, we received 30 responses from 12 suppliers, 30 responses to a singular RFP. We believe that was a very reasonable reflection of the market opportunities that exist at the time. We reissued the, the peaking purchase power agreement. We received seven proposals from four suppliers. Again, a reasonable indication of the market and, and we were very comfortable. The board, when I say we, we are here tonight as agents of the Board of Directors. They asked us to come to, to provide whatever support we could to your process. The power supply portfolio has been developed using industry standard techniques and prudent utility practice. And the reason I say that, I agree that a full integrated resource plan was not performed. I'm familiar with integrated resource plans, I was responsible for doing them from time to time with my utility. Every element that you would do in an integrated resource plan, except for two, was performed in advance of the development of the portfolio for KYMEA. Two things weren't done. A self-build option by the decision of the board, a self-build option wasn't awarded at the onset of the development of the agency for a couple of reasons. Number one, the size of the agency is relatively small. It's very small in relation to the marketplace. The most efficient, most environmentally benign units that you can buy out there that have a reasonable economy of scale are anywhere from 700 to 1,100 megawatts of size. So singular technology risks, singular unit performance risk, it is a, basically depending on the nature of the asset, it's a 30 to 40-year position on a product, 30 to 40-year position that you'd be taking with a self-build. The Board of Directors decided and directed in development portfolio to leave self-build on the table for now. Not that you wouldn't consider it in the future, there's very viable reasons to consider it in the future as you can get your economies of scale in place. And obviously financing at municipal rates can be very favorable. We are, we do have the all requirement supply for the initial three-year period locked down. I want to go into that in a minute, but I thought I'd hit on a couple of these others. The, the second piece that's not included are demand side management, energy conservation, demand reduction, components of that integrated resource plan. I included those when we did them in ours. The reason I could include them when we did them in ours, there's two ways you include them. One is if you, in my case, it was a utility operation. Our Board of Directors of our utility had control over the programs they implemented for their individual municipality. So we could drive the economics, we could create the programs, we could commit to the development creation of the programs at any point in time when our Board of Directors or Commission decided to do it. KYMEA is representing member communities. KYMEA has no authority, nor do any of the Board of Directors think the agency should have the authority to mandate any one member to put a program in place. So in the planning for electric power supply, it's very difficult to make assumptions on penetration levels, reduction in load demand that could occur when you have no control or, or no real influence on the development of those individual community programs. The second way it could be included, even if you didn't have that, was if there was a regulatory requirement for either amount or financial investment for those type programs. Again, Kentucky does not have a program like that. So it, there was not a way to do those components of an integrated resource plan, but with enough time, and we'll sit here in a workshop as long as you want, or as long as any representatives you would like us to work with have and can explain how all the other elements of an integrated resource plan have been, have been planned for, have been addressed in multiple scenario situations, again with that primary goal. We wanted flexibility. We do not have renewables in the initial power supply portfolio. We have designed for renewables in that initial power supply portfolio with the flexibility we have with the use of energy in the contract. So any given day, a renewable resource shows up, the agency can, can procure it. And I will go over in a minute how any individual member can create a renewables program on their own. So moving right into that, we thought the best use of our time tonight was to just try to bring some clarity, and I'll bring clarity into what the intent of the contract development and the intent of the contract languages are as it relates to each of these topics. So if, if we don't have consensus of opinion, let's just spend the time and try to get it. And the first is renewables. Right now, KYMEA has an RFP out right now for renewable procurement. We're in the midst of the analysis of that running right now. I'm happy to report we have 180, more than 180 proposals from more than 40 suppliers for renewable energy products. So in the next few weeks, we won't have to argue price and availability of any of the renewable products because they'll be sitting right here in front of us. How can renewables be incorporated? There's three ways. The important thing in it is each member has a choice. Depending on participation, you, you would likely use one of these three ways. If all of the members of the all requirements group said, yes, I want to put a renewable component into this package, you can do it as an all requirements project within the all requirements project agreement. That's number one, full participation by all the members. But let's say one member doesn't want to do it, or two or three or four don't want to do it, but a handful of them do. You have the ability through what the contract defines the generation resource project. That's a project where some, but not all of the members of the organization want to participate. If, and there's, it's handled the same way there is a project committee set, the rates are set out, we can go into those details in another forum if you like. The third, if no one other than a singular member wants to participate in a renewable project, we do that through a member-owned resource provision. And that member-owned resource provision is actually, so there's no misconception or no doubt, all the attributes, if a single member, let's say if Frankfurt wants to unilaterally, on their own, participate in a renewable project as a member-owned resource, every attribute of that member-owned resource flows to Frankfurt. So you can decide, as we discussed earlier today, you can monetize the RECs is, is one opportunity, or many environmentally focused groups take their rights to the RECs and retire them. The bottom line is Frankfurt will determine whether to monetize them or not, whether to keep them and hold them, or whether to destroy them. That's what, that's one of the many attributes. If, if we need to refine definitions of, to be clear on that, we can do it. But basically, the intent was all attributes. You're paying all the bills associated with that. There's no cross subsidy, but you're retaining all the benefits of that asset that you did on your own, for your own community. Demand reduction and, and net energy metering is a similar situation. There is nothing that the agency can do to prevent a single member utility from embarking on these programs. The, the note that was in the previous presentation on coordinating, that's an obligation to talk. There is nothing in that contract that allows KYMEA to veto or preclude you from pursuing that project. But you need to talk with your other members. Number one, because there may be opportunities for greater participation. And again, if we embrace the spirit of we're trying to represent the smallest and the largest, but keep each community's individual freedom intact to do as they see fit, there's no downside to a healthy dialogue. Direct load control is a slightly different animal, that's physically interrupting load. So that, the structure that we put in place to deal with that is you could, you do that as a, as a member-owned resource. Again, you get all the attributes, you get all the value. If you sell it to KYMEA, you're going to get a guaranteed cash flow, if that's your choice, a guaranteed class, cash flow for the rights to, basically that's the equivalent of capacity. If you could reduce, mandatorily reduce two megawatts of load, that's two megawatts less capacity, we have to buy, the agency will pay you for the ability to reduce its capacity obligation by that. And the other beauty of a program like that is because if, if you're doing it on your own, which is entirely your choice to do, you're going to be chasing your peak every month, you're going to be interrupting load when you think you might be hitting the peak, but you're not going to know until the month is over. So the thing, at least in my own experience, I've found with interruptible customers, they like, the customer likes the rate, they don't like to be interrupted. And so when you start interrupting the load, then many drop off that type of program. In the case of Florida, 150 megawatts of load showed up in a year because the demand reduction programs in a robust market were being cut routinely. So direct load control is different than demand reduction and net energy metering that you set those programs yourself. You can still do demand, direct load control, and we have a vehicle for you to monetize it through the agency or do it yourself. And the important thing on member-owned resources, there's three ways to do it. You could sell the attributes of that resource to KYMEA. You could contract with KYMEA to manage that resource for you. KYMEA will have a third-party provider that manages energy services, and you can contract for those services. Or you can do it yourself. There's nothing in the agency agreements that would prohibit you from monetizing the asset you put on the ground for yourself. So those are what we believe are currently within the agreement structure as it sits. There was some discussion and concern on the JAPA contract. We do have 200 megawatts of coal right now in the portfolio. We don't have 200 megawatts of coal by choice. The original portfolio design called for 100 megawatts of coal and 100 megawatts of natural gas, because fuel diversity was another fundamental tenant of the agreement. I can tell you that we could not ident, we had one combined cycle gas power plant in the first RFP. In those 30 responses, there was one natural gas combined cycle power plant. So JAPA is used solely as a bridge agreement to get to a position where more viable opportunities for natural gas were available, and in fact, they are. The RFP that we're evaluating now has a number of viable opportunities. So that will go away, and there is nothing in the conceivable future that would change that direction that we're taking. The extension of the BRECC The extension of the BRECT contract, that is something that, from our discussions with E3, we think is something that can be explored. That extension is out in 2029. It's a right, but not a requirement to extend, and we can see some structural opportunities and arrangements that may be to enhance the current agreements to allow individual entities to not choose to go into that contract if the agency as a whole decided to try to go forward. And there's, and there's structural provisions in the contracts to be able to do that. The SEPA agreement, again, is a member-owned resource, three ways. Right now, we've proposed, what we have in front of you for an agreement is to sell it to the agency. You'll get a capacity payment in addition to any energy revenue. That capacity payment pays the vast majority of all your cost exposure for that asset, and any energy profits that you make just add to that. You're very likely to be profitable on your SEPA agreements under this arrangement. But again, there's no requirement for any member to do it. If you want to do it, KYMEA is happy to provide this guaranteed payment stream, and if not, you're welcome to do it yourself. To opt out of other major resources, the natural gas combined-cycle is well underway. It's part of the initial portfolio development. For any other long-term PPAs or any other projects, again, that's an opportunity from the dialogue we've had to maybe add some clarity and consider creating opportunities that don't harm the balance of the members to give more individual freedom to the members to pursue alternatives. So, at the end of the day, this is what we think KYMEA is offering. We've defined, we have lower, more competitive wholesale power costs. That's, we are, we are in complete agreement on that conclusion. There has been direct involvement by every member in the development of the power supply portfolio, more importantly, the fundamental tenants around which they wanted the power supply portfolio designed. There's flexibility in the KYMEA contracts, as we've discussed, the, the three different ways we can do it, each with multiple approaches to how it can be done to give the flexibility. We know, we understand, the agency appreciates the need for communities to self-direct a number of their activities, to be responsive to the communities. And then, since the inception, there has been the flexibility to incorporate renewables and other programs, the opportunity to do it on a broader economic scale, but the individual opportunity to do it if it's something that you want to do, any member wants to do on a standalone basis. That's it in a nutshell. I'm happy, or our team is happy to answer any questions, and again, we welcome the opportunity to continue to have dialogue with the, with the Frankfurt Power Board and with E3 as you deem appropriate. We think just continued discussion will just continue to add more clarity and better identify the freedom the community truly has to manage its own affairs and, and its community-related responsive programs. Thank you very much.
The purpose of the last couple of days and today is to try to distill down the crucial, essential points that need to be considered more. The third information item tonight.
Mr. Chairman, I think Commissioner Roach had a question.
Sir, I'm sorry.
That's all right. Why, I appreciate your presentations. I know more probably than I want to know about this topic, but why are we, the, one key point that you didn't talk about that I was curious about is, I understand that you want to buy more power because of prudence, but I think the previous presentation asked why we, why we had gone to that extent of buying more power, so I was wondering why that was.
The initial power supply portfolio, this snapshot in time is a load for, is a singular load forecast that was developed. We, we understand how it was done. We don't believe that it's necessarily what you're going to see in May 2019. There's a 30-megawatt band. When you combine the loads of all of these participating members, that load can swing 30-megawatts on weather issues alone. So, and when you look at a number of a load forecast, that actually represents a range of outcomes that occur. For conservatism, the agency went to the high end of that range of outcomes to make, for the one fundamental issue to, we wanted the economics of the agency's power supply to not rely on the market to achieve its performance because the market can be volatile and unpredictable. So, we wanted to lock that down and create a situation where we went to market when it presented economic opportunities, but we weren't required to. We may be a little long, we may be long in 2019, we may be short some in 2019, but the key components of these agreements in place is they have full remarketing capability. So, we can take those back to the market if we want to neutralize that. We do not, but one thing I want to make clear, the agency did not take a long position for a speculative opportunity to go make profits in the market. It was clearly based on the forecasts that were utilized by the agency at the time. This, this is what, this forecast is one of those many scenarios of forecasts that can actually occur. This one assumes a 2016 start date, which was one of your milder weather years in each of your communities. So, again, there's 30 megawatts right there from weather alone, independent of forecasting error and other factors that occur. So, we may be long. It is not uncommon to be long on occasions, and it's not uncommon to be short on occasions. It's just the magnitude of that is the primary consideration. Yes?
Mr. Roach, I think your question was, E3 indicated we were long on capacity, so why are we looking at buying more energy? Fred indicated in his presentation that the JAPA contract ends in three years, in 2022. The RFPs we have out for natural gas are to take the place of that 100 megawatts of coal that end in 2022, so the RFPs we're looking at is for natural gas to come right in behind that 2022 with natural gas. So, when JAPA leaves, we're going to come in with natural gas. That's the RFPs we got out.
We also have the opportunity in 2022 to drop the third contract, Paducah, to anywhere within a range of 90 to 30 megawatts to fine-tune that asset base to the portfolio at that time. So, we get a look, we get refined data from all the member systems, but we're not adding 100 megawatts in addition to what we already have now.
Just a couple of quick follow-ups. I, I got it. I appreciate you all clarifying that for me. So, as what we, as, as what this, I sort of thought, thought in terms of a house as I was listening to the presentation, that is, we, have we kind of, what we've done is we bought fixed-rate power for a period of time at a low point, it's kind of like a fixed-rate shortage, and the, and the hope would be then you have that, you'd have that savings, but you're not, even though interest rates are low now, in the sense of power is low now, you don't want to take that risk to just buy, to have to buy too much on the marketplace.
Right. You have the right to take the benefit of the market, but you, again, we don't, there's not an obligation to take a single megawatt of energy in any of these contracts. So, you only take the energy you need to serve the actual load or to make a sale in the market, and you don't even take that energy if you could buy it from the market at a lower price if the low market presents itself.
After the three-year.
No, you could do that in year one.
But we still are paying for all the capacity regardless of the current energy.
Yes.
My main concern is that, I'm sorry.
No, 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 I, I just, you go ahead. I'll just say one more. Go ahead.
My main concern is that the people that are getting money from the member organizations of KYMEA is, they expect a certain amount each month. Is that true or not? If, if any member of that KYMEA reduces their load so much that they are not able to pay what, or pay their share of what the total payment to these, these power-producing entities, do the rest of the member organizations have to make up for that amount that was not paid to the power-producing entities?
The, the agency is the counterparty to each one of those contracts. The agency is required to make a payment monthly to each of those counterparties. The members are expected to pay their proportionate shares, but for the types of programs, the, the demand reduction and the net metering programs, if you reduce your demand for energy and the amount of energy you consume, that doesn't change, you're not going to pay more. If you do something that try, that attempts to create a cross subsidy by others, then you will need to true that up, but, but that'll be clear in advance.
Cross subsidy, what do you mean by that?
Well, if, if it's costing you $100 to buy, let's say, let's pick up your community program, let's pick one of those. If it costs you $100 to buy that.
By contract.
By, by contract. And let's say it's a premium, that's, let's say it's a $60 premium to what the agency can provide it for. As long as you're willing, your community is willing to pay that $60 so that nobody else has to pick up part of it for your program, that's what I mean by cross subsidy. That means someone else is paying for a program that you've done for yourself that isn't covering its costs.
Yes, okay, and that's, that's why we thought for a while that you were discouraging the renewable energy efforts because it would reduce the demand for electricity and may cause the rest of the member ordinance, KYMEA members to make up the difference to the power-producing entities.
Right, and again.
Premium costs, so.
Not to complicate the, it may help to talk about, or to reiterate what you said while ago about the contracts do not have minimum energy purchases. We don't have to buy energy from those contracts. That's, that's a big piece.
So, what, let me use that same example is.
But you do have to buy capacity, which is probably where all this company is coming around to.
It's probably half.
Yep, so, in, in this same, in the same solar example, if you subscribe for it on your own, it's a, what we call a must-take in the industry. When that energy is produced, you're obligated to take it, and you're obligated to take it at your, the price that you negotiated for that contract. So, that piece would, in this concept, would be entirely the responsibility of Frankfort's. But if Frankfurt wants to do that, they are, have the rights under these agreements to do that in multiple different ways. I guess in the extreme case, number one, the majority of these programs aren't huge. They're not typically huge from a capacity reduction perspective, demand-side management, energy conservation. It's a component. It's a very important component, but it doesn't usually shift the huge capacity profile of an agency. So, in many cases, and basically the way it's contracted right now, the agency absorbs that, they will remarket what you don't use. If over the long term, there was a cost recovery problem, they'd adjust everybody's rates across the board to do that by rate design. But again, the goal is you would have the freedom, the goal is if you had must-take provisions in these contracts, you'd be severely restricted in how much alternative energy or, or other community-based program, but we don't have that because we knew how the energy would come and show up, and we designed it right into the initial portfolio.
I do not believe that it was explained that way when we first heard of it, and I'm glad to know that. So, KYMEA will meet the must-take, or if there is one, they will meet it, and then they will sell that energy on the market and distribute the, the profits to the various member organizations.
For the things you do, let's, let's, for conservation, energy efficiency, and demand-side management, the agency manages that risk of any associated capacity reduction. If you go out and buy 100 megawatts of solar for your community, and there's a huge impact in what would have been your obligation under the all requirements portfolio, that would have to be true to up your rates. But you would know that going right into, to that project, how that would occur and how those dollars would flow. So, again, the primary goal is, is that the, the entity that wants to do a project is willing to fund the project and that no cross subsidy is required. You had one other question, I didn't want to forget.
I think I'll just skip it.
Okay. Yes, sir.
Good, thank you.
This is along the lines of the discussion you were just having. So, the KYMEA is committed to purchasing around 300 or 330 megawatts of capacity, and so every month, they're going to have to, KYMEA will pay for that, and the all requirements members will pay their proportion of that amount of capacity based on their particular demand. Is that true? And so, if, say the Frankfurt Plant Board, suppose their current load is approximately 150 megawatts, suppose they do aggressive demand-side management programs and net metering and reduce their demand by 10 megawatts. They would reduce their cost commitment to the KYMEA, but KYMEA would still be having to pay the same amount for the PPAs, right? So, that would shift the, the amount that the plant board saved. Would those savings be shifted onto other members, or would you adjust the rates that the plant board's paying to increase their costs?
It depends, and I'm not dodging the question when I say it depends because the function of portfolio design, we've put multiple assets with varying terms. So, like 2022, if you achieved 10 megawatts by 2022, and there was an economic burden on the agency that they didn't feel through remarketing that power that you're not using elsewhere to recover those costs, that would be one thing. But you've got such short-term positions and flexibility to adjust amounts is you could easily in 2022, in this example, you could drop your peaking contract by that 10 megawatts, and nobody's paying anymore.
Wow.
May I, may I help just a moment? If you are able, if Frankfurt is able to control its load in a particular year, it is going to affect the total demand of the agency, and it's going to put the agency in a position where they can market more energy and potentially capacity to earn revenues and offset cost. It's not, all of the resources that have been contracted for have very attractive energy prices. Energy can be sold in the, into the market to recover some of the capacity cost, and capacity can be sold into the market. That's why the little bit of potential amount that you have to market in those first three years, the analysis was that the market prices would cover that cost. Your point is, if the agency reduces load, if the members reduce load, and other members don't grow to absorb that, that doesn't mean that the agency's capacity costs are necessarily the same. The agency may still pay the same amount under the PPAs, but they will recover some of that by marketing more capacity and more energy in, to other parties. And the members will pay for the net cost of the agency. Does that help?
Yes.
Just following up on that. I, in your presentation, you were saying if we just went out on the market right now and bought all of our power, which isn't prudent, but if we did, it would be less expensive than, than our current contract. So, are you certain that if we have power that's somewhat more expensive than that, that we could actually market it in the short term?
Well, I listened to that part of the presentation, and, and what I heard was inconsistent with what the market told us when we were preparing, when we were evaluating responses to the RFP. At this particular moment, market prices are very low, but when the RFPs went out, there were several proposals to sell market-priced power to the agency in the future. You know, that was a per, a company that's used to transacting in the market, and they offered to sell power over the same periods that you would be looking at entering into, you know, buying under these PPAs. The, the actual proposals that were given by market participants were higher in cost than the proposals that were based on these resources. were higher in cost than the proposals that were based on these resources, based on which you entered P P As. So at that point in time, the participants in the market, you know, would say that the future cost of buying in the market would be higher. If you want a contract for it today, we'll charge you more than B R C, for instance, proposed to charge under that P P A. We compared that. Now, that's different than saying, I'm going to be in the short term market, you know, forever. It's a different comparison. E three said, we wouldn't recommend, it's not prudent practice, to just put yourself always dependent on the market far into the future. Okay? And we agree with that, you would never want to do that. K U's not in that position, so as the market fluctuates, they're not very much impacted by it. So you got proposals to sell you energy from the market and they were higher in cost than the P P As that K Y M E A entered.
Maybe you answered my question. I guess I was more wondering in the short term, because I, we had the opportunity to kind of roll back some of our commitment to buy capacity. And I'm curious about the board meeting where the K Y M E A decided not to do that because at least hearing the reports and things, it seems like it might be somewhat difficult for us to sell our S S capacity in the short term.
That that particular provision was not designed for managing to a revised load forecast. That was solely in place, that was a, what we call a condition precedent, to the agreements that the agency side signed with each of those providers to enter those P P As contractually. And the reason we did it was very deliberate. We were about to put in front of you an all requirements resource contract through K Y M E A. We would expect that the first question you would ask is what is the cost of of us making this decision to go with K Y M E A as opposed to other alternatives? What is the cost structure of that that sign up, that commitment going to look like? So we were, we were in a position, we we call it the chicken and the egg position, where you would like to know who your all requirements members were going to be before you went out and designed it, but you needed to provide cost information that we knew. Not that we speculated, that we knew we had contractual rights to before we presented those issues to you. And so that's what we did, we put a condition precedent that each member of K Y M E A had a load projection at that point in time. And so the concern obviously in balance in a portfolio is if it gets too far out of whack, then your fuel diversity and all the other things change. So that was what I would call a litmus test is, did a member sign up? Did a member of the agency sign up, yes. Okay, the megawatts associated with that entity is this much. So the contract provision was if you reached a specific threshold, then that would be your right to exercise or not. It was a protection, it had nothing to do with load forecast. And the reason I can be so convincing in that argument, I was the one who negotiated that provision, I know exactly what it says. And I know exactly what the intent of it was. To be able to go to a varying load forecast is a different product that we'd have paid a different price for at the time. So it's just important to, again, this is one of those misconceptions with enough dialogue, I think it can become very clear how those provisions work. We had a transmission protecting us on the ability to get transmission rights and we had the ability to get a minimum sign up right. And then that triggered the enforcement of those agreements.
I don't know if it's fair to ask, because those of us who are asking questions, I don't think understand as much as the consultants. But I'm still getting a sense that 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 we're on different pages here. So I.
Well, again, I think it's clarity, I think it's clarity. If there's misconceptions in the wording of the agreement, then we need to work hard to fix the wording of the agreements.
I don't know.
The specific agreement is is not one of those issues.
Kind of the consultant. I have a sense that we're kind of hearing two different sides of the story, but we're not hearing the conversation between them. It's complicated enough that it's difficult for us as a public to ask precisely that question, to really understand.
I'll just say that from our very careful lead of the relevant contract, there there absolutely was the opportunity earlier this year to reduce the capacity commitments that the agency had signed up for. And that that opportunity was not taken advantage of.
Well, that's a question.
That's an, that's an opinion, not a fact, without getting confrontation. We don't need to do that, but you you have two months looking at those agreements. We've been living with them for the development for three years. So it's just, I don't think it's productive to go into that art. Let's just say we are agreeing to disagree on what that provision was designed to do and how it was implemented. It was implemented at the unanimous direction of the the K Y M E A board. So again, I don't want to hold up the discussion. We have another presenter, but we serve.
I do have one question about the about the capacity. We heard two different comments in the meetings the last two days. One was, I guess, yesterday and or yesterday and just now. And your assertion was is that the capacity wasn't reduced because of weather variability or load variability to to have some coverage there to 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 adjust for that. Is that, did I understand that correctly?
We developed the portfolio for the load forecast for that at the time.
Right, and so and so you did reduce because you felt like there was a load there to to cut, to to need to be covered by that capacity? Is that the correct statement?
I'm not understanding.
Well, I guess the 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 other comment that I heard yesterday was that that in fact, the the overcapacity was an intentional decision to be able to go out and speculate on the market and sell that capacity on the market. And that was a specific comment, that that was the decision you used back at the beginning of this year to not reduce those comments. And so you're saying now that that's not the case?
It was not, it was not a.
Okay.
We did not, there was not part of the portfolio development strategy to take what I would call a speculative position.
Okay, because I was specifically saying that the meetings last two days, so I just wanted to make sure that was not, you're saying that was not part of the decision?
No, not taking a speculative position was not part of the decision. We recognize there's an exposure to some overcommitment as a result of the diff, the snapshot forecast that that we have based on a low weather norm, not even weather normalized data, basically, but it'll, low year. So there's thirty megawatts hiding potentially right there. But the load forecast, we did not make a strategic decision that we wanted extra capacity to go into the market because we thought the prices were so attractive.
Okay.
We contracted for what we thought the needs and the capacity reserves using the high probability scenario, basically, that, again, if we say three hundred and seven, there's that, that forecast will actually show a range around three hundred and seven and we went to the higher end of that range. So and the forecast we do next year is probably going to look different than that. But it was not, not to do, not to have a speculative position was not the primary intent of what.
Okay, thanks, I just wanted to clarify that because we heard both comments over the last two days.
Yeah, and you know, we we we, we had a lot of dialogue in a very short period of time. And again, there is no downside to spending the time to communicate and discuss and go through whatever level of detail that the Frankfurt Power Board wants to fully understand what we're doing, what the, what the agency is doing.
It is amazing that you reached a contract with all this varying.
There were a lot of moving parts in AMEAs, there are a lot. Yes, sir.
Does K Y M E A have a sense of a minimum load reduction that would be gained by a minimum level of energy efficiency improvements across the customer base? Was that part of the lay of the land analysis you did as you were kind of bringing Owensboro and Frankfurt and these other communities together under one tent?
We we couldn't identify or plan for that because each community did or did not even have a program in place. We could look statistically at what these programs done in a highly effective manner with a, with a dedicated resource base and funding from the member utility or municipality doing it, you can get a sense for what level of penetration is possible. But the other side of that is, is K Y M E A is a service organization, the members, they can't dictate the programs, they can't dictate what level of funding or more importantly, what program design to use. That, that's for your board here, who is intimately, far more familiar with your individual community than the agency as a whole does. The agency is a service provider and without, we don't, the agency does not want to control your programs and that. We want you to design them how you see fit. But then as we get a historical track record of that, it absolutely becomes part of the planning process. But we'll, we'll know the program, there'll be a documented program in place, the design will 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 be understood and the physical results that you achieve with that program will be documented in history and that does become a component of the planning criteria.
Well, I appreciate that, but I I think there's also some pushback to that position in that the absence or presence of something like an aluminum smelter within the mix is pretty clear. The distribution of house age and traditional energy efficiencies of homes in central Kentucky are also probably pretty well understood from the per residence energy usage that each member brings. And I think K Y M E A is a meta information manager in the way that it's looking at national trends, global trends, energy mixes and so forth, so that it may not be easy work to understand the five hundred thousand or whatever it is residential customers that come within this, under this tent. But each municipal agency has access to P V A records and per house energy averages that can be pulled together to understand the incentive side of, hey, we need to implement a program rather than either forcing the customer to bear the cost in a disadvantageous retail market along those lines. So I I think there is some measure of understanding the minimum potential load reduction across X hundred thousand households, life industrial customers that come within the tent because then it becomes part of your mix of of variability or stability over time. We could factor, so many tens of thousands of houses were built between eighteen eighty and nineteen twenty, nineteen twenty and nineteen forty. I mean, understanding their range of conservation and energy usage isn't a mystical thing, it it is science. So we might say, what if everybody bought a brand new refrigerator and everybody got a brand new H vac system? What's that cost level going to be? And where do we focus our energies? Because then it becomes economies of scale. It doesn't have to be the Frankfurt Plant Board helping us buy insulation. It's three hundred thousand people who are bringing buying capacity to these markets.
You're touching on what we fully expect would be one of the service, at least some if not all members would have the agency provide. I mean, one of the fundamental tenants of the agency organization as a whole is economies of scale. It's far less expensive to have the agency make the investment in scouring the countryside for the best programs, the state of the art programs, the best practice programs, the financial investments required to have them work. Energy efficiency is getting better than we are right now, continuing to improve. So that is not uncommon, that is, more often than not, we see joint action agencies, the members are directing them to develop those services and there's a wealth of knowledge out there and there's A P P A programs and and all the other things that can assist in that. But it's far more efficient to be able to do it on a collaborative effort. But again, that's not a requirement, but it's an opportunity. Tomorrow, if if one of the members said, we would like the agency to start pursuing a program, it'd be designated as a project and they'd move forward and do that exact thing you're talking about. Yes, I want to be respectful of the time.
Well, I I want to point out that later in the agenda, we have a public comment discussion period coming up. So I I want to, next I want to hear, I'll give Mr. Hadad a rest here and I want to hear from agenda item number three, which is an information item, presentation from Owensboro Municipal Utility regarding the report from E N E and K Y M E A.
Okay.
The agenda was modified, didn't it? Didn't you email that said that the agenda was monitored a little bit? And if there was another presentation?
I think, I think.
While you're waiting, can I ask a re-question? Want to stop?
What about?
There was a, there was a series of recommendations by three about how to improve the the details of the contract. And I'm just wondering what your commitment is to share those with other members of K Y M E A to help improve, improve what we have right now?
We're, we're here tonight at the, tonight at the direction of the K Y M E A board director. All of the feedback, we've been working with the draft report, it's been confidential up till tonight, but even so, we have a board meeting next week, we intend to give an update, we intend to share the report results and assist the board however they see fit and progressing. All.
Well, good evening, Mr. Chairman. Thank you very much for the opportunity to address you. And I want to thank all the board members for their personal commitment to improving the Frankfurt Plant Board. I know it's a big challenge and a a big use of your time that you invest trying to help keep rates low and I'm sure you're not compensated nearly enough for the work that you do, if it's anything like my board. I can answer a lot of the questions that were answered, asked tonight, but you know, I think it's good to hear different perspectives. I've been involved with this for, since its inception. And my name's Terry Naughton, I'm the chair, the general manager and CEO of Owensboro Municipal Utilities. I'm also the treasurer of the agency. And I have kind of got my hands around the finances of the agency. And as you'll see as we go through the presentation, we have embedded within the the process that we've been going through here a a set of checks and balances to make sure that we're not just blindly following the lead of our advisors, we're doing independent analysis as well to make sure that the decisions and the portfolio that's been made make economic sense. So a little bit about O M U. We're the largest municipal utility in the state, about a hundred and sixty million dollars in revenue, quite a bit bigger than any other utility. We do provide water to all Davis County, Kentucky. We produce about thirty million gallons a day, peak demand. We are governed, as you are, by a independent board. They're appointed by the utility, by the mayor and approved by the utility, by the city commission. And unlike your your utility, we provide a lot of money to the city. We're the, we're the third largest source of revenue for the city behind property taxes and other types of occupational taxes. It's a big number, nine point six million dollars this year in cash contribution to the city. They own us, as do the the customers that we serve. We also provide about two point three million, two point four million dollars of services in the form of a payment in lieu of taxes. Our power, our power supply expertise, you know, before I came to O M U, I was in the private sector, started a renewable energy company, sold it to an infrastructure development company, was in the trading and marketing business for eighteen years prior to that, working for mostly unregulated affiliates of investor owned utilities. So I've been doing what our advisors have have been doing for most of my career. Thirty-four years in in the business, started my career with L G N E before they merged with K U and became the bad big brother and ran the environmental affairs department there. I'm an environmental engineer by training. We also have a couple other guys on staff and some support that have significant experience as well. A gentleman, Rob Leesman, he runs my operations on the wholesale side and you'll see why that's important. It's much the same operation that will be done by the agency. And David Blank, he's a guy that is a commodity trader, he understands risk. And at the end of the day, what we're talking about today is risk, price risk. Price risk and policy, community policy decisions. And we have to keep that in mind. One thing I want to point out, we rely on the market for for almost as much as seventy percent of our electric revenues, the wholesale market. Because we. One thing I want to point out, um, we rely on the market for, uh, for almost as much as 70% of our electric revenues, the wholesale market, because we have so much surplus energy. And as a result of that, we have to be able to manage that risk in a very, very straightforward and, uh, visible method. Now we, you know, it's tough, given the limitations of public power and the kind of fishbowl that we're in, to keep some of that stuff confidential, because we want to have, we want to know, we don't want the market to know what our positions are, what we're trying to do, because we'll get arbitrage if, 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 uh, our competitors are out there know. But the point is that with, with all this power supply expertise, we've been mirroring all the analysis that's been done by the consulting team. We have our own proprietary models, um, and we check all the numbers and make sure they make sense. So I hope that gives you a little bit more comfort about, uh, that there's a second set of eyes. We've been in the power generation business a long time, since 1900. Uh, our primary source of energy is the Elmer Smith Station, which is a 405-megawatt net, uh, plant. We've, we've invested, uh, 260-plus million dollars since 1992 in pollution control equipment in order to continue to boil, burn western Kentucky coal. All of our coal is delivered via truck to the plant, we're within 60 miles of all our coal suppliers. As I mentioned, we have significant surplus capacity and our peak demand is about 208 megawatts. We carry about 25% reserves on top of that and then the rest of it, we sell into the market on a daily basis and we do a lot of forward hedging. There were some questions that came about hedging. I think the way to look at hedging is, hedging is a method we use to reduce risk, plain and simple. We are just trying to reduce risk, price risk generally. So we, we have a sophisticated and experienced group that manages this risk because it's so important. Um, you know, the way that your contracts are set up now with KU, all the fixed costs of KU contracts are embedded within your rates. It's part of your demand charge, it's part of the dollar-per-KW charge that you charge your customers. For OMU, about 40% of our capacity, so 40% of that 405-megawatts is not in the rate base. We have to get it from the market and that's a lot of risk. So we understand the risk and we understand how the markets work. So here's a, you know, we're at a transition, a, a very big transition for our community and, and we're wrestling with this issue right now. Some of you know, we have, uh, we have a 52-year-old plant or 53-year-old plant and a 43-year-old plant and we've announced the retirement of both of these. Why? Because there are alternatives that are cheaper on a net present value basis for our customers over the long run. We still have a lot of debt. We have $200 million of debt plus on that plant and even though that stranded debt must be paid by our customers through their rates, it still makes sense for us to switch from coal to a lower cost of generation. So today, there are very many less expensive and less risky sources of energy. Think about that. When that plant breaks down, I gotta go to the market and buy energy to replace it. Uh, when that plant breaks down, I've gotta have sufficient reserves sitting there on the balance sheet to be able to fix whatever broke, to be able to get it back online. And all my risk is concentrated in that one plant. The agency provides us an opportunity, all of us, to diversify that risk so that we all share that risk and no single party is, is wearing all the risk. There's big benefits to that for all of us. So what, what about our involvement in, in KYMEA? Let me grab my water. When I first started working for OMU back in 2013, I met with, through the Kentucky Municipal Utility Association, KMUA, I met with all of the other electric companies, municipal electric companies, and we started discussing the potential for this type of an arrangement. And OMU, with our own staff, put together a proposal, an indicative number proposal for all the currently served KU contracts to say, "Look, if you buy from us, from our coal plant, we can save you a lot of money." And that's what started the whole process about, there are alternatives out there that are cheaper than the KU contract. The economics are very important. I mean, you terminated a 40-year-plus relationship, you want to be sure that you achieved the objectives, which was to, to get savings. And I think the E3 report proves that those savings are real, they're there and have validated your decision to terminate the KU contract and enter into the KYMEA All Requirements So I'm not gonna go over all these points. Fred Spedick did a great job describing the competitive solicitation that was done, why there wasn't an IRP done. Why do we want to participate? You know, well, you can see, economies of scale are real. They're real to us. Today, as an example, I'm spending almost a million dollars a year on third-party services just to schedule and tag energy to the market. So that 40% of extra capacity, 70% surplus energy, I have to sell that into the market. I can't afford to have a 24-hour staff that's manned on every shift and have all the computer systems that interface with the RTO markets and, very complicated business. So I outsource that. I outsource it for about a million dollars a year. Just by joining KYMEA and pulling ourselves together, that million dollars a year for me goes down to half a million dollars a year. And it's a great deal for everybody else because if they were to contract individually for those services, it'd be way more, add them all up, be way more than a million dollars, probably be about $2 million. So there's real economies of scale that we can actually point to that we haven't really taken into account, uh, when we look at the cost structure. Power supply, I'm retiring two coal plants. I need to replace it with something. We've been working very closely with the, with the advisors on looking at these gas options. We think coal, combined cycle natural gas will be a considerable part of our portfolio. It's the cheapest, it has the best outlook long-term, it's cleaner than coal, it has the dispatch capabilities that we need in order to, uh, to execute against the market. So, um, we think that the other great benefit that the agency will have is rather than OMU having to have a full-time wholesale power marketing staff, that level of expertise and for studies like someone over here was asking about, uh, housing stocks and energy efficiencies, that level of expertise will be housed at the agency and we'll all be able to gain the benefit of that organization and the studies that they do. More cost-effective, bigger dollars, uh, but, but a bigger impact on each of our, our And increased power supply reliability. Again, I've got two plants, two, two units, if they both go down, I'm on the market. If I'm within KYMEA and there's a portfolio of three, four, or five assets, some contracts, if any single one goes down, it's not gonna hurt us economically as bad as the risk profile that we sit with today with that large coal exposure. And we've talked kind of around the horn about this, but I want to make it clear, KYMEA is not a risk warehouse. I think the consultants have done a good job describing the fact that the risks are really pushed through to the customers and we all have to remember that, that it's not a risk warehouse. There will be no subsidies between parties, between members, because everybody's wearing the risk to serve their load. The agency basically goes out and grabs as much of the economies of scale possible to mitigate that risk and we all benefit from that. But the agency itself, because it is the entity that faces the market, must be financially stable at all times. It has to have a very strong balance sheet, good financial metrics so that we can access the market, both the spot market, as Fred indicated, you know, our contracts are structured in a way that if it costs $28 to buy coal-fired energy from Big Rivers and we can buy it in the market for, at night, for $10, we want to be able to buy that $10 power, that's an $18 savings. We have to have excellent credit in order to be able to do those trading transactions with other counterparties in the marketplace. So a lot of the contract language that we've been talking about here is to ensure that the financial integrity of KYMEA is always top-notch, not a risk warehouse. What do we, what do we think, um, what's OMU's relationship gonna be with KYMEA? Well, as we retire our first unit, we're be going, we're looking to the agency for backup. When that second unit, the only one we'll have, goes offline on a forced outage, we need to have somebody that's standing there ready to sell us power. And without getting into a lot of detail, you know, that peak-capacity procurement that we're buying, that happens one or two hours of the year. The rest of the time, we're only using about 40% on average, 40 to 50% of that capacity. So there's a lot of surplus energy available. The agency will be monetizing that surplus energy into the marketplace and it will be providing reliability to its members, like us, and we'll have to pay for it, obviously. We're gonna pay our fair share for the cost of that backup. Power marketing and scheduling, I've talked about, that's the million dollars that I anticipate will go down to half a million. Resource planning and asset optimization. Planning for the whole group is much more cost-effective than planning for one member and we will be looking to the agency to do that asset planning as well. After we retire the second unit, we're still trying to decide whether we're gonna become an all-re requirements customer of the agency or a partial requirements customer of the agency. And I want to kind of clear the air, I think there's been some confusion with some reports that I've been reading about OMU's lack of participation as an all-re requirements customer. As I've shown you, we have way more capacity and energy than we need. We don't need to be an all-re requirements customer. If we were to bring our asset into the agency, and because the agency is not a risk warehouse, we'd be wearing all that financial risk anyway. So it was our decision that we didn't want to complicate the, the birth of this agency with hanging OMU problems on top of it. We will, in the long term, uh, be a buyer from the agency. I got the second bullet point there, potential equity ownership and natural gas trans, uh, gas generation or transmission. The agency is set up to be able to access our low cost of capital. Municipals have the ability to go to the bond market and get really low-cost money. Way more, what, our cost of money is way less than the cost for Big Rivers, for example, than for, certainly for Joppa, for Dynegy, way less than Dynegy. So in the future, as we evaluate alternatives, we'll be looking at, well, what if we invested equity rather than did a PPA? Because it may result in lower rates at an acceptable risk. Fuel purchasing, if we get into the natural gas business, we look into the agency to do that fuel purchasing and scheduling, uh, generally through a third-party. Equity ownership of utility-scale renewables and/or a renewable PPA buyer. We're interested in renewables, we've done a solar study, uh, my engineers have done a solar study. We think solar makes sense when we're not sitting on 200-megawatts of excess capacity. It has real value from 2:00 in the afternoon till 6:00 in the afternoon, real value, but only if it's done at a utility level, because the costs of that utility scale level are significantly lower than rooftop solar or even small, uh, community solar projects. So our analysis says solar will be part of our future, we just gotta wait till we get out of that coal position before we can really do it in a meaningful way. Regional transmission organization settlements, uh, you know, we've talked a little bit in here about the, the risk and the allocation of costs to each member based upon their use of the assets. It is a very complicated accounting and settlements process that goes on in the energy business, extremely complicated, lots of software options, computer systems, servers that have to be maintained. That's what the agency's gonna do. They're gonna manage that for us. Energy efficiency programs, talk a little bit about that. I think OMU, we've just, we've developed a, you know, we're in the first year of an energy efficiency, I call it the residential energy efficiency team. We're doing the inventory on our housing stocks and our goal, quite frankly, is to help those people who can least afford their electric bill. They're the ones that live in, in apartments that aren't well-insulated, that have terrible windows and we gotta find a way to incentivize those landlords to invest in energy efficiency. That's what we're studying right now, we're doing, looking at best practices, all that work, we shared with the agency. Policy development, wholesale market policy development. I mean, there are countless, every year, there's an effort within the, the General Assembly to try to deregulate the power business in Kentucky. Every year. Every year, there's a, an, a move to try to mandate renewables in Kentucky. The agency will be the go-to resource for our lobbying efforts to either support or to oppose some of those bills. We want, we need to protect our ratepayers, but we need to do the right thing for our communities as well. Okay, well, that's a lot of things, but that's the benefit of having a joint action agency. And, you know, we're all kind of starting down this path, but it's a proven model that's works in 49 other states. We haven't done it here in Kentucky because the coal industry and the investor-owned utilities have had a lock on this market for us. And when you decided to terminate your KU contract, you opened the door and made it I'm gonna skip over most of this, because I think it's already been talked about, uh, except for the last point, which is, we fully supported and still do the initial supply portfolio and the strategy with the Dynegy Bridge Contract. It was unfortunate that when the IRP went out, we didn't get the responses that we thought we would get on natural gas. But in a, in a, in a kind of a twist of fate, now that we haven't, the prices are even lower than what we would have gotten for natural gas a few years ago. So that's worked out to our benefit. So we support it and, you know, quite frankly, if I'd been in, in the power board's shoes, we would've signed the all-re requirements contract, no question about it. It's a good deal, it will be a good deal, uh, there's always tweaks, but that's why we have a board, that's why we are gonna operate the, the agency by a manner of policy. Each of those policies will have to be approved by the board. Last thing I want to talk to, about is community priorities and, and we've kind of beat this one a little bit, but I want to reassure everybody that from the beginning, the agency is set up to meet the needs of its members. That's why we exist. And the project committee structure allows that and Fred did a good job of explaining that, of how that project committee structure works, the generation projects and, and other The second bullet point, you know, we must be able to meet our customer expectations. That's why we exist as municipal utilities. We have to be able to do that. In public power, local control is the cornerstone of our business and what's good for one community may not be good for another. And I'll give you an example. In Madisonville, one of the members where two major coal companies are headquartered, it's probably not very likely that they're gonna embrace- probably not very likely that they're going to embrace renewables in a big way. But Berea already has and probably will continue to. And we can accommodate that within the structure of the KYMEA organization. And again, I just, this risk warehouse thing, we got to keep coming back to that. We are not a risk warehouse, we can't expect it to be. I think we've already kind of beat this one up pretty well, so I'm not going to spend any time on it. I know, I appreciate the, the amount of time we've already spent. And I'll just finally say, why do I think it's best for Frankfurt Plant Board? Well, I go back to the beginning, which is cost. At the end of the day, you folks are tasked with protecting the ratepayers. And the prudency of the decision to terminate the contract with KU is validated by the savings that E3 believes we're going to achieve and that we believe we achieve. I personally think the projections are still very conservative. I think our rates will actually be a little lower, because there's going to be a lot more market interaction than we've modeled. Fred and his team have done a great job, John, Fred, all the other folks have done a great job of building flexibility into our contracts that allow us to use the market when it's cheaper. The numbers you've seen don't include that market interaction benefit. So, I think we're going to see even lower rates. The agency was designed for flexibility and to achieve the member-community expectations. That was not possible under the KU contract. It certainly is now, and I, and I would venture to guess that you'll have more flexibility by being a part of this agency than not being in the agency, because of the economies of And I think renewable and energy efficiency will be more cost-effective, just because of the scale. You know, what's good in one community will work in other communities, and, you know, you know, in a perfect world, if we're buying, you know, replacement windows for homes in 10 communities, we may be able to get some economies of scale on those replacement windows. If we're borrowing money through the bond market to finance energy efficiency programs in residential structures, we can do that through the agency as a non-recourse debt to, to each of our member cities. So, there's lots of big advantages, I think, that we can achieve through the agency. And lastly, the agency, and we've talked a little bit about this in the contract, and I agree with Fred, I think if we spend more time talking about the specifics of the contract, we'll understand a little better that there's an equitable allocation of the risks and the benefits. And that's our goal, is make it equitable. Everybody pays their way, nobody subsidizes the rest, and we all have a, a common goal of achieving the lowest cost in a manner that's consistent with each of our community priorities. So, with that, Mr. Chairman, I do appreciate the opportunity to come before you, and be glad to answer any questions you might have.
Anything specific that anybody wants to miss, ask Mr. Nolte? If not, we've, we've got a long way to go.
Yeah, one.
We'll, we'll, well, I was going to have you speak next. Do you want to go ahead and address him with your specific question, and then I'll bring you to the podium next?
Okay, there's another question, Mr. McDonald. Welcome. From Andy McDonald, thank you for your email.
Yeah.
Could you, could you just clarify, comment on whether you evaluated? Well, I reviewed the IRP documents, I think it was a slide, slide presentation that your staff had shared with your board, and it didn't seem to make much reference to the KYMEA as a supply option for the future. So, could you clarify?
Yeah, it's real simple. As, as I mentioned, you know, we're not a risk, the agency's not a, a risk warehouse, so whether we do it ourselves or we do it through the agency, the cost will be the same to OMU. So, if I do it through the agency and I can achieve economies of scale, it'll be cheaper for customers. If I have to do it myself, the customer still pays all the costs. So, that's the reason why, and, and quite frankly, the, the agency was, the, the first effort of the agency is to meet the requirements of the contracts that are being terminated with KU. And we're very, very respectful of the fact that these members that terminated their contract with KU have to have certainty about their power supply. We don't want to muck up the works until that's all worked out completely, because it would have really confused things if I started throwing in OMU's needs on top of everything. So, we're, we're trying to be very pragmatic about the way that we're going about this. Did I answer your question?
I want to know how you're going to cut your third-party supplier cost by half.
Already have quotes.
But the other member agencies don't sell on that, do they?
Well, no, but the, the other agent, the other members of the agency are currently paying for those services as part of the KU contract. They're just paying KU.
Oh, okay. Well, thank you for clarifying that.
Yeah.
All right, next item is.
One more.
Just a quick question. Could you clarify something you said at the very beginning about OMU's relationship to individual customers? I think you said you see them also as having a stake in the utility or ownership.
Yeah.
But that's not the reality, that's, that's an attitude, is that correct? You're not a cooperative, they don't have shares, and their relationship with OMU terminates if they're longer billed by you, is that correct?
Well, I think, to be clear, you know, we're all jurisdictional monopolies. So, if you live within the confines of our jurisdictional monopoly, you have to buy your electric from us.
Right.
Okay? If you're a taxpayer and a resident of the city, then you own OMU, you're a customer-owner, and you have a right, just like you do at this board meeting, to come to our board meetings to request any information under Open Records Act, to participate. You know, I, I, I'm very much sensitive to costs and, and the cost of power. Part of my job is to represent the unrepresented portion of our load, which are those people who are too embarrassed to stand up before a group like this and say, "I'm poor, I can't afford my electric bill, and the $10 a month that you're going to raise it, that's the difference between, you know, generic drugs and, and, and the drugs that my kids need." And that's the reality, because just like the demographics in Owensboro are not that much different from Frankfurt, 22% to 24% of our, our customers live at or below the poverty line. And they're unrepresented, except for the folks here on this board, they have to represent them. And they're, they never show up at these meetings to speak, at least they don't in Owensboro. Somebody has to speak up for them. So, while I, while I hear from special interest groups all the time about the need for higher-cost renewables, things like that, I always come back to affordability. And our job as, as managers of the business is to make sure that we're providing an affordable product for all of our customers, even those unrepresented ones. Okay.
Okay, Andy, your item is a comment from Mr. Andy McDonald and Envision Franklin County.
Good evening. Thank you for the chance to speak tonight. On behalf of Envision Franklin County, I wish to express our appreciation to the Frankfurt Plant Board for responding to the concerns that we shared last year regarding the KYMEA all-re requirements power contract by hiring an independent consultant to analyze the contract. We appreciate the opportunity to review E3's report prior to its public release and to meet personally with Michelle Chait from E3 to discuss the report. After having reviewed E3's report and discussing it at length with Ms. Chait, we have a number of comments to share. Overall, E3 appears to have performed a thorough credible analysis of the KYMEA contract. Their conclusions highlight some positive features of the KYMEA contract and allay some of the concerns that we have previously expressed. However, their report emphasizes other serious concerns with the contract which should be addressed. Positive features of the KYMEA contract identified in E3's report, which I think you'll see echo what Mr. Haddad had to say, first, their conclusion that the KYMEA's power portfolio provides lower-cost option than the plant board's current contract with Kentucky Utilities. Second, there are no minimum energy purchase requirements in the PPAs, which means that the plant board would have the potential to source lower-cost energy and renewable resources on the market. And third, the ability to purchase energy on the market provides the plant board with protection against potential future environmental regulations that could impact the coal-based BPAs. These were all significant concerns that we had expressed last year, and we appreciate E3's perspective on them. So, some people might say, this confirms what the KYMEA consultants have told us, that we can expect lower power costs with the KYMEA than with KU, so what more do we need? Well, the E3 report highlights a number of significant ways in which the contract could be improved. First, the report notes that while E3 expects KYMEA power costs to be lower than KU's, that doesn't mean it's the least-cost option. E3 provided examples of known power supply options that could produce an even lower-cost portfolio with a lower carbon footprint and environmental impact as well. Second, E3 notes that the KYMEA's members are presently committed to substantial excess capacity, at least through 2022, which could cost the members an extra $4 to $5 million annually if the KYMEA is unable to sell it on the market or find new customers to take it. The members face the risk of whether the KYMEA can sell this excess capacity, and if they cannot, the members are responsible to pay for it. Third, we remain concerned that the contract creates barriers to effective conservation and net metering programs that could assist customers to lower their bills. I realize there's been discussion about this topic tonight, and admittedly, I wrote this before our discussion, but there, I still have a nagging concern, and we believe such programs are very important for our community, especially for lower-income families and small businesses. And for years, as I've been advocating for renewable energy, I also advocate for programs that serve lower-income customers. Conservation programs, demand-side management programs, weatherization programs help lower-income customers. And I haven't seen much action done on that, in that front, from the plant board's perspective, whether to save the plant board money or to help lower-income customers. And I don't want us to be in a position three or four years from now where they say, "Well, it's not cost-effective, because we're not going to save any money if we're reducing our loads, therefore, we're not going to do the programs." So, I want to be sure that in the nitpicky details of the contract, there aren't details that don't support doing these kinds of programs. And the contract is very complex, and there are details. So, many utilities do provide conservation programs that do help their customers and also help the utility to save money. So, we want to make sure that if the plant board does programs that reduce their peak demand and reduce their load, it's going to save the utility company so that they will have the incentive to do the programs for their customers. The shortcomings in this agreement that E3 has identified are not minor details that we should just learn to live with. There are fundamental problems with the process by which the KYMEA has operated and within the terms of the contract. These have reduced local control over our community's power supplies and have imposed substantial long-term financial obligations onto members. The fact that the all-re requirements members were automatically committed to the three PPAs with no option to choose which PPAs they want to participate in, the terms for terminating the contract, the absence of an integrated resource plan, the many ambiguities within the contract, and the lack of transparency about how rates will be calculated are all features that could be improved to the long-term benefit of the members. The contentious process we've been engaged in since last August illustrates why an open, transparent process that invites the public's participation is important to the utility planning process. The plant board was presented with a finished contract last July and were urged by the consultants to approve it at their August board meeting. Despite the concerns and protests from local residents, the board voted 3 to 2 to approve the contract. We have now had two independent analyses of the contracts, one paid for by local citizens, and a controversy about how to change a contract that's already been signed. If the board had taken the time to allow open scrutiny of the contract before voting and had commissioned an independent analysis to advise their vote, they could have addressed the issues with the contract before becoming financially committed to it. And personally, I would have felt more, more trust in what we were being presented as a contract if I'd felt like there was a sincere chance to, to modify it or to discuss the details and say, "Okay, we can change these things before you vote." It, it felt back then like we were being sold a used car, and so it, it just raised distrust on, on the community's part. So, I, I think that illustrates why a, a different process can be helpful in the future. I, I don't like fighting with people, and I don't like being antagonistic, but that's where this process had, had come to. So, Envision Franklin County supports the recommendations proposed by E3 and asks the plant board to take action to amend the contract, or failing that, to seek other options for their power supply. Thank you.
Okay, next item on the agenda is an information item, public comment and discussion. Anybody care to come to the podium and comment or discuss?
Hello.
Ma'am, all we require is that you identify yourself and, and tell us whether or not you're a plant board customer. You don't have to be.
Oh, thank you, I'm not. I'm a KU customer, which I didn't realize was selling on the, on the market until I listened to our esteemed speaker. My name is Marty Booth, I'm a citizen of Franklin County. I'm not a, a customer of FBB, but I represent people that are, because I'm an elected public official. And I want everyone here to know how wonderful it is to hear explanations of policy and to have all the people presenting, to have faith in the people that are gathered here to understand what they're saying. To me, that is a great step forward in our community, and I applaud you for it. I still have some questions. The main one, of course, is the obligation, as I stated earlier, for a member of organizations of KYMEA to have to pay for the shortcomings or on the premium to keep our contract. And I'm glad you explained it to me that way. And I understand a lot more about this contract, and I applaud you for having this meeting for us to understand a little bit more about the volatility of what we're dealing with. Evidently, it's a commodity, and even though it's a municipal utility, we're traded like a commodity. So, it seems more like a business than a service at times, and I'm sure that's hard for the citizens to accept, and you have to remember that, that it is more presented as a business than a service. So, keep that in mind. Thank you.
Any more speakers?
We had a couple that got cut off earlier, did?
Jim?
Jim, did you have something to say, or are you good?
No, no, my question's been, been asked, thank you.
If not, I've been asked to.
Well, I guess if there's, if there's no. Oh.
Hi, my name's Connie Lumley, and I'm a plant board customer, not for electric, but for other things. So, and I guess from all of our different presenters, it seemed like there are still some ambiguities in the contract. And so, I just really want to encourage the plant board. I know that we've already signed the contract, but as a member of the public, I'd really like to. like to hear laid out very clearly the process for dealing with these ambiguities and writing down, this is how we're going to do things. This is how it works so that everyone's clear and on the same page going forward. Because I think that's really important. This has been a great meeting, and there's been, I think, a lot of great discussion in the last couple of days. But if we then just move forward and everything stays the same, it doesn't really help. So a clear process about how the contract is going to be revised would be wonderful.
Mr. Chairman, if I could, if there's no more questions from the public, if I could put Ms. Chait on the spot and ask her to maybe reflect on some of the commentary she's heard from her, from the other speakers, and just summarize for us some.
I actually heard today quite a lot of agreement on the high-level aspects of the contractual arrangements, the fact that the energy is predicted to be of lower cost than KU's service, and the fact that there is a lot of flexibility built into the contracts, and the fact that member utilities have been engaged in the process and will continue to be engaged in the process. I do believe that Andy's points about some lingering issues with the finer details in the contracts should be considered and hopefully resolved. And I would really like to see a large effort on the part of both sides, the members and the agency, to continue the positive, open dialogue that's been progressed during the past few days and at this meeting, to be able to result in both a contractual structure and a cooperative working arrangement that can be to the benefit of all of the members and their customers for the next 10 years and hopefully beyond. That's it.
Been requested to call a closed session, so I'll be formal on this because I understand it's fairly legalistic, and it's important to state this precisely. I'm asking permission to call a closed session. Moving for a closed session pursuant to KRS 61-810-1K and 61-810-1C for the purpose of discussing and updating the board regarding KYMEA power purchase agreements, renewable power purchase agreements, and the E3 analysis thereof. Counterparties to the PPAs and renewable PPAs have disclosed confidential terms and conditions within these agreements. KRS 61-810-1K and 61-878-1C allow for a closed session where discussions regarding records or information disclosed to the agency or required to be disclosed to the agency as confidential or proprietary would, if disclosed by the agency, provide an unfair advantage to competitors of the entity disclosing such information. So do I have a motion for a closed session?
Staff doesn't think the closed session is necessary unless some of the board members want to discuss.
Okay. I read all the...
I tried to catch you.
Okay, okay, I get going. Okay. Well...
I guess my view, Mr. Chairman, is, is that, are we in a discussion before we have a vote? Is that what we're doing, I guess?
Well, I'm trying to find out whether or not you're asking me to call a closed session. Okay.
I tend to agree with Herbie in the sense that I've learned a lot, and I only attended one of the sessions with Terry the other day, and I've learned a lot. You know, they were talking to Owensboro. I've learned a lot tonight.
Sure.
And I think I appreciate everybody being here. I mean, there's a lot to digest, and I think one of the things I probably need to do is to defer to Michelle. We have a report in front of her. I don't know if she wants to take all this in, do any revisions before we accept the final report. We've not accepted the final report. If there's anything you want to go back, reevaluate, change anything, add anything, whatever, and then I think at that point, I think it certainly will be timely to have a session. But I think as of tonight, I just think there's a lot to take in, and I think people have learned a lot, and I just would like a little time to absorb it. I can't imagine what you're like after time zones and everything else you've got to just be. But I think, you know, there's been a lot of information. I think it's been a great discussion. I'm just, I mean, I'm more than willing to go into a closed session, but I don't know what we'd discuss at this point, other than just that we've got a whole lot of paper in front of us.
Okay, so if we don't have a motion, we don't have a second, so we won't have a closed session. I agree. We've just been asked to accept the E3 report, just like we've been asked to accept other reports.
And are we even accepting it tonight, or...
Well, for the information, we don't...
Do you want to ask, are you going to want the opportunity to make any revisions or changes or addendums, or...
If it's possible, I'd like to consider that tonight and then let you know tomorrow. It's possible that I won't, but it would be helpful if I could reflect on that this evening.
Yeah. In your own time zone?
Yes.
I just understand that this is recommendations that she's making.
Right.
And we have findings by our in-front consultants.
Sure.
So somehow, all this has to work out in the KYMEA context.
And I think we've taken a lot of steps. I think we've taken a lot of steps to go in that direction. I mean, I think it's, I think it's been helpful.
Okay, do we have a motion to adjourn?
Some moved.
Second.
Second.
On favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say no. Motion, meeting stands adjourned.